In the two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, liberty and justice are all.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Here.
I'm ahead of the game. My hearing went. I'm here.
Uh, Mr. Bass?
Here.
Mr. Carson?
Here.
Mr. Furtman?
There.
Mr. Patafsky?
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Mrs. Love?
Here. Citizens comments?
No comment.
I'd like to welcome Mr. Mashah to the table this evening. He is going to sit in on our meeting in practice for his move to the seat next month. So, we're gonna welcome him tonight. Minutes?
Mrs. Love, before we start, now we have some guests with us this evening. Mr. Swink.
Thank you. We just wanted to take a few minutes, coaches here with me, ask if they could address the board and community. This is our coach for our girls softball team this year, as y'all know, they won the WPIL and they were great in the PIA playoffs. Just a little background, the girls were second in the section, they played South Park, who is, is a very tough team, went into the playoffs, beat Steel Valley by six to five. They moved on to semifinals and they took on Freeport, who was a number two seed in the section, we were number three, beat Freeport six to four, went into the WPIL finals against South Park. South Park again, who won the state championship last year and was pretty much nineteen and one, or something like that, they were a very good team. Our girls came out, probably played the best game I've ever seen. These guys in ten run them and beat them twelve to one to win our first WPIL championship. Moved on to the state playoffs, and again, we've never had a team that won a game in the state playoffs, they went to North Allegheny and we played Central Martinsburg, who was a runner-up in District Six. We ended up beating them ten to seven, which again, was another outstanding game. We moved on to Dubois, where we played Hickory, that's right, Hickory, who was a District Ten champion, which is a northern area from us, we won seven to nothing in that game. Again, the girls played, I mean unbelievable softball, if you watch it, very few errors, we hit the ball, and we got the opportunity to go to St. Francis here on Monday and play Phillipsburg Escola. If you know anything about Phillipsburg, if you watched the game today, they were in the state championship and they won the game. They were state champs this year, that's the team we played, they beat a team from out east eight to two. So, our girls was right there, you know, almost into the state championship, and I really congratulate the coaches, I congratulate the girls. It was outstanding to watch them this year, the teamwork that the girls put together, it was just, it was just great to see, and I'm so proud of them, and you guys all should be in the community, and I know everybody is. So, with that, I'd like to introduce the coaches, they have a couple words, like to present the board and the community with a trophy, and I hope we can really celebrate this win.
Thank you, Charlie, thank you, members of the school board and administration. What a magical run this year. We had a very, very young team, and from the very beginning, I want to say thank you because the school board allowed me to hire who I wanted to hire, and that was Chris Brunson and Jeff Yotzi. Without those two guys beside me, we wouldn't have had any success. These two guys are grade A coaches, and they carry themselves very well. The training that we put the girls through, starting in January, was very intense, and the girls worked very hard and they accepted what we taught them, and they also had the vision that we had. We talked about these goals at the very beginning, even before we started. At the beginning of the year, our first game, we thought our goals were gonna just go down the toilet because our pitcher, freshman, hurt her knee, and she had a torn lateral meniscus, which she played with the entire year. The kind of person that that girl is, she didn't even talk it over with her parents, she went and saw the doctor, they said she could wear a brace, she decided that if she couldn't play, our team wouldn't be successful. Jess Matheny is her name, and she deserves a lot of credit for this season, along with all of our girls. But she came back the third game, and from there on pitched with a brace, and Charlie just kinda reviewed what happened. I do want to say thank you to the community, to the administration and the school board. We had so much support, I can't even tell you, after every game that was won. My phone blew up, it took me hours to get through my texts and to text people back and say thank you, shake people's hands that were present at the games, in which there was a lot of support there. When we won the WPIL, we had a bus trip through the town of Scottsdale in Everson, which was incredible, you know, people coming out on their porches waving at us, I've never felt anything like that with a sports team. And that's us, that's our community, and basically, we talked all year, and Chris can verify this, that the girls, they just said that they played for each other, they loved each other, they played for their family and friends, and they played for our community, and you see what happened. So, we do, Chris, if you want to say anything? Okay. I said it all. I apologize for saying it all, but it gives us great honor to be able to present everyone here tonight, the school board, the administration, and our community of Scottsdale, Southmoreland School District with WPIL 3A state championship for 2018, along with the banner that we would like to hang in the gymnasium. So, Chris, if you want to just take it up and present it to Mrs. Love and Mr. Mashah for a minute more?
Thank you so much for showing me what she has to say. Thank you.
Congratulations.
This is what the banner says.
Congratulations.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And finally, one thing I do can say about our team, the girls are very young, I think we're gonna be there again, I think we got a great shot of going to the states next year if they keep working, but you know what, whatever it takes, guys did a great job, and we're really proud of you. So, again, thank you.
Minutes?
You'll be asked to approve the minutes of the May 10, May 17 to May 24th meeting.
Can we have some information here? Yeah. Reports? Two items for tonight, and then there are others I can handle. I had, I can't get into my board doc, but I tried to, had sent out a proposed resolution to be in total compliance with the school code that requires that you have a bond approved by the school board for the position of treasurer. Now, the amount of this would be, in my opinion, very small, I'm recommending $10,000, and the cost of that, I think Mr. Marnell can give you information about, and the school district is able to pay that. This would keep us in complete compliance then with the section of the school code dealing with treasures. What's been going on with the situation where we have a treasurer is different than the business manager, and even though the functionality of that is not, you know, something that requires activity, the school code says do it, so that's why I'm recommending it, you know, you do that so that you're in complete compliance with that. The other thing I wanted to cover with you is to give you some information about how things now affect legal options later, and some of this, you've heard bits and pieces from me before, some of the newer members who unfortunately aren't here tonight may not be as aware or aware at all, and that is that you have a situation where multiple past fiscal years of the budget have utilized fund balance to quote "balance the budget."
David, excuse me, since we have three people absent, two of whom are newer board members, do you want to hold this information till next week?
Well, if these folks are gonna make decisions tonight, then they need to know this, and I can, I mean, I can give them, I'm gonna give everybody the information, but I think it's important that people who are gonna start considering things need to be aware of these things. Sometimes restricted or assigned balances have been used to pay for capital projects or funding past ERIP plans, however, there's also been use of fund balance to pay for ongoing expenses. The obvious problem is that ongoing expenses are not matched with ongoing revenues, so...
I can't hear you. I'm glad you did, thank you.
Yeah, we'll see if we can hear you.
The initial budget for this year was quite large, and you're, you know, even with a Act One tax increase, it's $1,893,000, and the administration is proposing possible cuts of $1,45,930, which if enacted would significantly, but not totally reduce it, at best still leaving a significant deficit. Now, to the extent that you have any deficit going forward, that means that any ongoing expense that remains as part of the deficit will come back for the following 2019, 2020 fiscal year, plus automatic personnel cost increases, with which you will need to begin dealing with at the latest in January, but in reality, even sooner than that, in order to maximize your options. So, to remind older members and the newer members, number one, the need to have calculated and monitor the financial criteria used by the Financial Recovery Statute, to see, number one, which if any, you are in danger of transgressing, and two, whether you will pass or fail the criteria under different scenarios. A, by passing all the proposals which the administration is recommending, by passing some, or passing none. The specific criteria are many, but the most immediately relevant for districts like Southmoreland are, the school district's unreserved fund balance has declined for three consecutive years and is less than five percent of the school district's annual expenditures. So, it's not just enough to look at, well, what is something going to be now, because what you do now will affect how it ends next June, but you have to start deciding about that in January or sooner. The school district's disk costs are at least thirty percent of the school district's total annual expenditures, the school district's total outstanding debt is greater than the school district's annual expenditures. I, the school district's assigned and unsigned total fund balance in the school district's general fund as a percentage of total expenditures is less than three percent. The school district has accumulated and operated with a deficit equal to at least two percent of the assessed valuation of the taxable real estate within the school district for two successive years. A more detailed explanation of the Financial Recovery Statute is in another memo, which I will have previously handed out and I'm going to hand out again. So, number two, be aware that you start your next budget season in January 2019, or sooner really, that the time for decision-making will advance and become more complicated if you want to maximize your consideration of options, such as A, seeking exceptions to the Act One limits for increasing taxes for either special education costs or increased pension costs. B, whether or not to seek a referendum on exceeding the Act One index, something that has a very bad history of not succeeding in the Commonwealth. Or, and/or what to do if either you do not seek a referendum, or the referendum fails. The next point is to be aware of the timing issues, that a referendum occurs at the same primary election, which would be on May 20th of 2019, but a school board seeking to utilize economic reasons for suspensions, furloughs, must pass a notice of intent at least sixty days prior to the end of the fiscal year, which would make that deadline late April of 2019, and also require weeks of preparation prior to that. Under Act 55 of 2017, which added subsection 85 economic reasons that require reduction of professional employees to section 1124 of the school code, in order to utilize this subsection, or even think about having the option to, the school board would need to make findings as part of its resolution. Some of those findings could begin coming into play now. The economic conditions of the school district making the proposed suspensions necessary, and how those economic conditions will be alleviated by the proposed suspensions, including, here it is, a description of other cost-saving actions taken by the Board of School Directors, if any. And another one is, little Roman numeral D, the impact of the proposed suspensions on academic programs to be offered to students following the proposed suspensions, as well as the impact on economic programs to be offered to students if the proposed suspensions are not undertaken, compared to the current school year and the actions, if any, that will be taken to minimize the impact on student achievement. These are just some of the considerations, there's a whole list of them, which I've given you in another memo, but these start coming into play in your decision-making about the administrative, the administration's proposal for cuts. So, if you should consider, if you should consider whether maximizing making non-academic cuts now, in addition to any recommended academic program curtailments now, will help you in hopefully reducing the possible impact of the effects on academic programs in the future. Stated another way, the more non-academics that you cut now, the more it helps you with not having to do academic cuts now and later. Seems obvious, but it interrelates with these different statutes, and becomes one of the things that you have to consider. And number two, whether showing the history of cost-saving actions in advance would be helpful. So, when you consider the list of proposed cuts, you're not just dealing with this current coming up budget year, but how it affects your legal options in dealing with the next budget year, which is gonna come up upon you very quickly because of the need to plan in advance. Thank you. Business and finance?
At the June 21st meeting, you will be asked to approve the May financial reports.
All business?
Proposed budget for the 2018, 2019 school year, the administration met twice during the recent week to discuss and develop a potential list of budget cuts, the list is attached. I would like to add that we have worked diligently in trying to provide a viable option.
What we would plan to do for next week is to group some of these together, so that we don't have to have the board vote on 116 items separately, but we would, you know, want the board to either, you know, agree or disagree using their line item purview with the cost savings that we've suggested. If you scroll down to lines 80, 82, and 83, athletic accident insurance, we've asked the solicitor for an opinion on that, as to whether or not we actually have to carry that, or whether that can be something that parents pay for through a pay-to-play. Generally, this is a secondary insurance to the parent's coverage, so, you know, we're kind of waiting for David's official word on that. And then the two items that are in red, legal advertising, we had overspent our budget because we had to do some legal advertising this year, and that would be items that have to go in the courier in terms of special meetings and things of that nature, so we're recommending that that be increased. And in line item 84, right now, we're over a million dollars in cyber and charter school tuition, and again, that was something that we had underestimated for last year, so we're recommending a hundred dollars, a hundred thousand dollars be added to that allocation, but everything else you see on here is a reduction. Could open that for any discussion, if there are any questions, or if that's something you want to take a look at, moving for next week, that's fine as well, in terms of the overall group.
Do you want me to answer? Yeah, you can. Okay. I wasn't sure if everybody was done talking. Yeah, I had sent a brief email to Dr. Molnar, had done some research, and I believe that the most recent case, which was only a county court case, kind of reversing a much older case, supports the position that the board does have the discretion to cut, to not have these kinds of insurances, that although you're authorized to do it, you're not quote "mandated" to do it. I do recognize, though, that that question has not really been litigated to a higher court level, so I have to tie to that, but it's still my opinion that you do have the legal authority to do that. The practical problem, which I want you to be aware of, and I was pretty blunt in my email, is that the cost of insurance tends to approximate what in the past you seem to be having expended whenever the insurance company has a claim, you know, you have a claim against the school district and the insurance company defends it and gives you a lawyer, and it seems like on any case that seems to be even moderately serious-looking, even though it does not have a right to succeed, a tendency to go through the amount of your deductible. So, there's almost an offset there. So, yes, you can do it, I'm just telling you that I don't know if it's a real savings or not, in a practical sense. And when you don't have the insurance, the problem is people who get desperate, you know, when they don't see any coverage for something, try to find a way, some exception, some new theory, to try to make people pay. So, those unfortunately are your unpleasant choices. Yes, it's legal, the wisdom of it, it's up to you. Question on insurance, just like the parents have insurance, and it has deductibles, and we say we happen to go with, does the school supply insurance to take care of the deductible?
That's in fact, I think what you're going, no, sorry.
That's what we're doing now. This insurance class supports insurance.
Yeah, but what are you talking about, eliminating all insurance and not even having this? That's the proposal. You mean not even, just the parents' insurance?
That's what the... That's an option that we're giving the board, yes.
Currently, parents' insurance is always primary, then the sports insurance is secondary, and the sports insurance comes with a hundred dollar deductible anyway, so...
If the parent is not insured at all, do we even permit the child to play? It's kind of a rare thing that would happen. In the more distant past, before CHIP and all those kinds of things, I think it was a more, a greater concern.
I don't know that that situation has ever arisen.
If you can police that any child who is playing has significant primary coverage, either under a private, you know, regular insurance plan or the CHIP plan, I mean, that would be a big help in towards giving greater consideration to the fact of cutting it. But, once again, the parents get stuck with the deductible, so that's kind of a situation that, you know, you'll be faced with unhappy parents if they have to pay deductibles. But that's your choice, that's what you have to decide.
Other questions or points of discussion on the list we provided you?
I'm just curious how you chose cross-country tennis and golf as the possible programs to eliminate?
Those are recommendations by high school administration, generally those are low participation, is that correct? Dan Tracy?
Golf is higher participation. Spent it down.
Like some of the other programs, I mean, I don't know if we'd say more money because they have more participants. I just curious how you...
Yeah, one of the things, one of the things we looked at was Title IX, so that we're making equal cuts to male and female, so there's Boys and Girls Golf, there's Boys and Girls Cross Country, we have Boys and Girls Tennis, so that way, cutting girls' volleyball, for example, then cut something else on the boys' side, because all those have to be equal.
Also, with those three sports, there's got a middle school program right now, so it's not like we're paying away from the middle school, you don't have any, or figures commended in those three, so that's another reason why I'd like to keep the ones that are still female, I suppose, available if we can.
No, okay, excellent. Now, one other question I have, and every year, different county court members have talked to me about it, and talked to the board about it, and I don't know if it's in here, maybe it's not seeing it, which is so many items. Every year, the highest-paid salary employees in our district get shirts, jackets, hats, and all this sort of stuff, is that still in the budget, or is that something we can look at taking out?
That can be taken out. Charlie, can you address that?
I can.
Some, some school employees, administrators, and so on, you know, get shirts and things of that nature, is that actually budgeted, or are those complementary items, or how does that work?
Usually, you can get somebody to work, get some extra ones, but otherwise, I mean, a lot of times, whatever we have left over, you can give it to the staff, I'm sure. So, I mean, if I, it's all in my budget, I keep it under whatever I have, I don't know, you know, when they're loading the class, we need to use, it's been the same ever since I've been here, we're so many for those, it's gonna make some changes now.
So, you have no way of knowing how much we could save if we eliminated?
Yes, you have to save, I mean, I could probably save whatever the twelve shirts would be, or so, probably twenty-five, thirty dollars, or depending on what we order around, or it's easy when we go, cost or four or fifteen, so, whatever, listen, we go through the bit items like we do here, so it's not like we just go out and order a shirt off there.
Right, yeah.
And your minimum, drive it to a price table.
Right.
I mean, if you want to reduce that, slightly, that's an option, we can cut that, just take that.
I'm just throwing it out there, takes about, throwing it out there.
Probably, you can probably save maybe five, another day, another dollar.
Mr. Swink? Is it possible that if somebody wanted a shirt, they could pay for it themselves?
Well, that's what we started last year, if you remember, we put it on the website. Every year, the highest paid salary employees in our district get shirts, jackets, hats, and all this sort of stuff. Is that still in the budget, or is that something we can look at taking out line item?
That can be taken out. Charlie, can you address that?
I could.
Some, some school employees, administrators, and so on, you know, get shirts and things of that nature. Is that actually budgeted, or are those complementary items, or how does that work?
Usually, we give somebody, we work, get some extra ones, but otherwise, I mean, a lot of times, whatever we have left over, you know, you can give it to the staff, I'm sure. So, I mean, if I, it's all in my budget, I keep it under whatever I have, you know, when they're loading the class, we use. It's been the same ever since I've been here. We're so many for those, it's going to make some contribution.
She has no way of knowing how much we could save if we eliminated.
Yeah, she has to save. I mean, I could probably save whatever the twelve shirts would be or so. Probably twenty-five, thirty dollars per, depending on what we order around. It's easy when we go, cost her four or fifteen, sell, whatever, listen. We go through the bid items like we do here, so it's not like we just go out and order a shirt off.
Right, yeah.
And your minimum value is driving to a price table.
Right.
I mean, if you want to reduce that, slightly, that's an option, we can cut that, but just pay for that.
I'm just throwing it out there, takes five. Throwing it out there.
Probably, you could probably save maybe five hundred, eight hundred dollars.
Mr. Spring. Is it possible that if somebody wanted a shirt, they could pay for it themselves?
Well, that's what we started last year. If you remember, we put it on the website for all teachers and anybody that was interested, if you wanted to order a coach's shirt, we got it at the same price the bid price was for like the beginning of the year. And we could probably expand that to even outside, if you wanted to set up some kind of web-based order system, that way, if anybody wants a shirt, we would set it up as a given as far as a teacher or extra shirt.
I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. Like I said, it takes five.
But, right, last year, between the two of us, we started that, and, you know, we got a pretty good response. I'd like, just something I'd like to see where we can almost do it, like have a reporter, you know, set up a different shirt, set that way. And if you wanted to change, you want a hot shirt, it's available. A lot, a lot of people like to have the same coach's shirts that they have, and they are nice shirts, but the price is different.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
The middle school basketball coaches, is that assistants, or is that?
Yeah, what we eliminated, under the coaching, Mrs. Lovett asked, what it is, we took, where there was multiple coaches, we eliminated one assistant from each program.
Since you're on this, the security stuff, we give, we collect them back, hand them back out next year especially. They've been new this year, like only a few months old, and we give this all out, and then next year, we're going to go and buy more for the security, crossing guards, whatever. You see them wearing jackets at Walmart and everything else. You know, if, if anyone knew we could save any money there by collecting them, putting them in a bag, paper names on them, take them back next year, they get them. If they don't come back, it's extra stuff for us. But I can't see them taking them, and just every year, we're going to replace them, because they're really not wore out.
Right. Yeah, I don't know that we do replace them every year.
Well, I know this year.
The owner cycle, this year, we did, simply because we were changing the way we did some things in terms of, you know, kind of going out of fighting a little bit better. When someone resigns their position, they are responsible for returning their, whatever, you know, clothing we've given them. I don't know that we've collected them at the end of every school year, but that might not be a bad idea.
Just like your, your crossing guards all have those yellow, or, yeah, the green discovered. I mean, there's no reason we can't collect those.
Right.
I mean, I know it's, it's not a lot of cost, but still, you go over the years, years, you save a little bit of money, because I can't see handing that stuff out every year. It just, it's all.
Yeah, and we don't hand that out every year like, they'll use the same one in the vault that we're using this.
Yeah, but if they don't come back, they don't get it, they keep it.
No, if they don't come back, they're responsible for returning everything.
Oh, okay. All right. And another thing, and the gas companies, I see in the report, they're sixteen hundred dollars a month to our bank. Are we pursuing this about the gasoline?
Yes. Yeah, we've been in conversation with the township about that, waiting to see what their answer is. And if we're not able to piggyback with them, then we're going to be looking at tanks.
Well, I know we can't buy gas in here. We can't buy gas here, because there's subsidies from a different place, in town or whatever. We more or less have to go out on our own.
Right. We only be able to use their tanks while we keep track of whose gas is.
Mr. Bystoles. In talking to Mr. Kiefer, he's looking to make some changes and some additions to some of the things that are currently taking place. So, there, there is good possibility that there will be some changes along those lines, what you were addressing with earlier, with the clothing.
I can have a question. Amy, Mr. Earl.
I just want to throw a couple of things out there for consideration for next week. The administrative team has given us what we asked for in giving us a list of over a million dollars of cuts that they can do most without. Not what they want to do, but what they can do with most without. And it's been mentioned that we're going to group them up. You know, that's, that's fine if that's what you want to do, but I, I think there's so many viewpoints amongst all of us, that it's going to be hard to pick and choose the different things that you agree on, I agree on, or whatever. And I'd like to see us consider the whole, the whole thing, the whole million, whatever comes out to. If in the future, as we go along, and there's something to be cut that needs to be put back in, we can put it back in, like the board. But I think we need to take a look at the total picture. You know, if we put this into little groups, then we're going to be spending weeks. I don't like this because of this. We all have different agendas. I think we need to look at this in spattality and say, you know what, let's do it all. Even that is a good start, it's not enough. Second thing is, when we do this, you're going to get phone calls, you're going to get people in here. Thing of it is, is these programs, we have to find a way to pay for them. We don't have that money anymore. You know, we're talking about some sports programs. Yeah, I, I give you a good example. Twenty-some years ago, when Zinger was the activities manager or activity supervisor, there wasn't a girl's volleyball, and the girls wanted volleyball. And he told them, there is no money in our budget for volleyball. If you want volleyball, you've got to go out, get a parents' organization. And that's what they did, to make, long story short. If they wanted volleyball, now it's part of the school process, but, you know, back then, if they wanted volleyball, they had to pay for the volleyball. We can't keep paying for things that everybody wants that only affect a few. That's all I got to say. One more question. How's the Rustville school process going?
David and I met with a potential buyer two weeks ago, I believe. They were going back to their board, and we're waiting, we're waiting for them to get back with us in terms of what.
You think you're going to get a decent offer?
Pardon me?
Do you think you're going to get a decent offer back, what you had the offer to sell for, which I don't know what it was?
We hope, we hope so.
Well, no, I mean, there's no figures on the table.
We did not put figures on the table. And David and I debated that, that strategy. And we didn't, because we're either, you know, the appraisal that we had, one is for highest and best use, and then one was for.
I think, see, Jack and I discussed this, and I don't know how much of this you want to talk about, and probably can give away cards, but the, we discussed whether or not to hint around at some kind of a number, or even say a number, which then gives them something to attempt to undercut. And so, we both agreed that that was not a wise idea. As it turns out, when we spoke with them, they, you know, the, the meeting, I provided them with a sheet of information, not a sheet, but a, several pages of information, and they revealed that they did not have any authority yet to actually mention a number or do anything. So, we would have not been having a real exchange at that point, and we stuck to our position of not bringing up numbers. So, they are going to their board here in the middle of this month, I can't remember if it's tomorrow or Monday, we're close to it, to get some authority and, and then really get going with some more authorized discussions on their part. I, I didn't see the point of throwing numbers at somebody who doesn't have authority to do anything. So, they know we want to sell. We made it very clear about, you know, what, what the property was, what the situation was with the use of the baseball field. They're trying to work with us about that, and, but we definitely said, well, yeah, the school board is interested in selling. So, they said, well, we're going to go back to our board and find out if we have authority to start moving along with this process, because at that point, they still in.
Now, do we have to give them a certain length of time if they don't want to buy, if we had another buyer to come in there?
We, we're not bound to them.
What?
We're not legally bound. I'm not sure I'm understanding your question.
Okay, if they don't give us what we want for it, and you have another buyer that's willing to buy the building, do you have to give them time to get out, or?
When you say get out.
Well, it's not, they're not going to buy it, right? And you have a buyer that wants to buy it, how long do you have to give them before you say goodbye? Is that clear enough?
Are you talking about the tenants, or are you talking about the proposed first buyer?
I'm talking about the people you're talking to.
Okay. Well, if, if you haven't gotten to an agreement, then you can terminate it at any time.
Yeah, but you have to give them a certain length of time to get out, don't you?
Not if you haven't signed an agreement yet.
Do we have a lease to?
Okay, that's, that's the next thing that we need to talk about. I think he's asking is, if, what kind of notice do we have to give the leaseholder, is what he's asking.
Well, that's what I was driving at.
Yeah, and that's a very good.
I don't know that you want to terminate.
I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up, because we do need to add to the agenda, and I apologize, I forgot to put it on, lease renewals for these people, because their leases expire at the end of June. Okay, so we do need to, to renew those leases.
Because I know.
We have been renewing them for a period of one year because we're planning to sell, so we're not, we're not tied into a five-year agreement or whatever the case may be.
That's what I was concerned about.
Well, I fully agree, I support Dr. Molnar's position that we should have the leases renewed. And I think it's much too much of a guessing game to think about trying to terminate those leases, because, you know, I think the initial position that we're going to operate in is that any buyer would, for, you know, a short period like a year, not have a big problem with having leases.
Yeah, but the lease is coming up so soon here, at the end of this month, right? Am I right or wrong?
Right.
So, you know, if they don't move one, then we're going to re-lease it.
Well, they're not going to move by the end of this month.
It's not going to get resolved by the end of the month.
So, but you, you don't even have an agreement that they might even want it. So, we're either going to have to lease it to them for six months, or whatever.
Yeah, but you're, you're correct, which we have to renew those.
But that's what we're talking about. You should renew the leases regardless, for one year, not multiple years, one year.
Okay.
Now, what happens then is, if someone buys it, they are bound to that lease until that lease expires, which would be, in this case, less than a year, because it takes time for these things, your transactions, to occur.
Okay.
I have a question. If the sale of Rustville is successful, where do those funds go? Would that be those, that purchase price would have to be put into the fund balance?
That would go into a, a fund balance, and it would have to be designated for capital, capital projects, capital improvements, things of that nature. So, in other words, we couldn't use it for general operating expenses, we could use it to put a roof on the primary center, or to.
Or some of those, maybe some of the things that we weren't going to go forward with, might be able to go forward with.
Yes.
Okay.
That, that's a property, so the money has to go back into property.
You're kidding.
I know. Rules, rules, rules.
I just wanted to know.
Highly regulated business.
Yes, okay.
I did have a question about the sports that we're going to eliminate. Do they have apparent, like, boosters? I know they're small, their numbers are small, but do they have any kind of a boosters program? For, for the golf and cross-country and tennis, do they have any kind of a boosters program?
Yeah.
They have a small boosters program.
Small, small.
So, parents want to fund it and sponsor it.
Yeah. New business.
Close to you.
Not that I'm for or against it, I'm just a curiosity question. Line sixty-two, reduce meal refreshment cost, what is that?
Right on. A, a lot of that had to do with sometimes when we're having staff development meetings, we'll have refreshments, things of that nature. Not going to do it anymore.
It's probably a small amount, but what about what's behind me? Is that we eliminate that?
That can be cut as well.
That's good.
Yeah, that could, that could be cut. Tell you what, one of those invoices brought a month here.
Nothing like it used to be, maybe fifty, sixty dollars.
Yeah, so. About files in a year, a little less maybe.
Just every little bit helps.
Sure. I can move to that, too.
At the June twenty-first meeting, you'll be asked to approve the posting of the meal charge policy. A copy of the policy is attached to board docs. At the June twenty-first meeting, you'll be asked to approve an extended school year agreement with Amerike. Once again, a copy of the agreement is attached to board docs.
Amerike is someone you never heard of before, formerly NHS, Northwestern Human Services. I'm not sure if they were purchased or just changed their name, but it's the organization we've been dealing with right along for extended school year for students with certain disabilities.
Service agreement with Colleen Heights.
At the June twenty-first meeting, you'll be asked to approve a service agreement with Colleen Heights for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. We do have students enrolled there. A copy is attached to board docs.
Awarding of athletic bids.
At the June twenty-first meeting, you'll be asked to approve the bids for athletic supplies for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. That is also attached to board docs.
Question, do we, hey, Charlie, do we put these all off for bids to different companies? The athletic stuff?
There's a list, if you open that, it says everybody got bids. Everybody was back, the lowest one.
Okay.
It's, it's reduced from last year by five thousand.
But it's the same quality.
Same quality, yeah. But that a lot of time, if someone's going for a football number, someone's going to be, you know, safety wise, but no substitutions, so it's been, I mean, active specification.
We actually have that. Two documents.
It is recommended at the June twenty-first meeting, the board approved the insurance renewals from the Furia Montella Agency, and to accept the recommendation that the district dropped the terrorism coverage from the policy. The adjusted premium would then be two hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars, or an increase of nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, or a four-point four percent increase from the two thousand seventeen, eighteen premiums. Details are attached to the board docs.
Question, is that terrorism policy, is that what they talked about, I don't know how many years ago it was, where like if somebody cyber gets into our system and steals information, is that the same thing, or is that a different one, the terrorism one?
I believe that's, that's a cybersecurity policy, is that correct, Jim?
No, this is, for example, is airplanes flying into the Twin Towers in New York. It's terrorism by terroristic groups, not, not domestic, what, what we might call terrorism. Somebody is deranged, and they walk into a building, a post office, a school building, and kill people. That's not an act of terrorism.
Oh, okay.
Terrorism is, is an act. Act of terrorism means any act or acts that are certified by the Secretary of the Treasury in consultation with the Secretary of Homeland Security and the Attorney General of the United States. To be an act of terrorism has to be a violent act, dangerous to human life, property infrastructure, to have resulted in damage within the United States, and yada, yada, yada. So, in, in effect, what's been happening tragically in our country is, is not deemed as terrorism. So, this policy, which was instituted after the nine-one-one attacks, and we all got frightened, and we added these to our insurance policies, well, no one has collected on these, because there's no foreign group, official terrorist group, that has, that has done any damage to us. Is it a remote possibility? Well, of course, but for something to happen here and go through all the, the formal steps to be called terrorism, it, it seems, seems ridiculous. So, it's, I mean, it is your choice, but it's, no, it has nothing to do with computer hacking, cybersecurity at all.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The big, one of the biggest increases on here is the workman's compensation proportionate to the other things, it goes way up. We don't have any claims, or, or, did I hear you write in a meeting a few months ago that we do not have the insurance based on claims?
Sorry, say again?
We don't, the, the insurance premiums for workman's comp aren't based. We don't, the, the insurance premiums for workman's comp aren't based on whether we have claims or not?
Oh, it's, I, I could show you the actual detailed policy, I, I have it here. There's a computation that is done by the insurance company, and it's based on a computation done, done by the Department of Labor Industry, there's a whole multitude of statistics. They look at three years, so, not the seventeen, eighteen school year, but they look, look back at, at sixteen, fifteen, and fourteen, so they look at your, your claims history there. And then, of course, in, in the amount of, of dollars that they pay out, so on and so forth, and then all this stuff gets crunched together to compute a, a premium. So, in effect, we have a, we have a, a year in there that, that bumped up our cumulative claims paid amount, so the insurance company adjusts it, just like when they, when they lowered the amount in prior years. So, you, there's a note down here, fifteen, sixteen, we were at seventy-four thousand. And then sixteen, seventeen, you know, it went down to fifty-seven thousand. And then last year, it went up to sixty. So, we're still below where we were three years ago with that, so, if you'd like to look at the actual policy information, I, I have it all from.
I'm fine with the explanation. I, I was just under the impression, I, I thought you had told me that it wasn't based on whether we had claims, but obviously it is.
Oh, yeah, but claims are, are part of that computation, absolutely, just like with any insurance policy, and if you have claims on your homeowners, your autos, whatever, especially in workers' comp. We are, even historically, we are, we're much better than we were back in twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, we were over a hundred thousand, so.
Oh, I remember this.
Uh, we, we've been, we've improved, uh, with, you know, a little bump up for next year, you know, hopefully, you know, in that bubble year, because it's all, it's a three-year rolling average, much like, similar to workers' comp, not workers' comp, unemployment compensation, where they go back four quarters to compute, you know, how much somebody would qualify for, same, similar here. So, when that, when that higher year bumps off, we, we, we're having a good year this year, but they don't look at your current year. So, our current year now will, will go into figuring out the nineteen-twenty premium, so that higher year will bump off, a lower year will be added to it, so next year, you know, things work out, and hopefully, we'll see a decrease like we did for sixteen, seventeen. Much better than what I had initially budgeted as a, as a safe estimate, if you recall. So, I think overall, package came out very well. So, I'm, I'm rather pleased, in totality.
Mount Alawishis College, college in the high school agreement?
It is recommended at the June twenty-first meeting, the board approve the cooperative agreement with Mount Alawishis College for college in the high school. Copy of that agreement is attached, and I might want to point out that it is at no cost to the district. Parents actually pay it for credit costs of, I believe, fifty-five dollars.
Bonding of the district treasurer?
At the June twenty-first meeting, you'll be asked to approve bonding for the board treasurer pursuant to the attached resolution.
There'll be a bond in the amount, ten thousand dollars. I got the, the invoice for it, the premium cost is only one hundred dollars.
Need a motion to adjourn for personnel?
I think it's recess.
Be recess?
No, we're adjourned.
Are you done for the night?
Yeah.
Okay. Second for adjournment for personnel?
Or adjournment, whatever, okay, what we're doing.
Do you second?
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed?